And welcome to the Southbridge School Committee Meeting on Tuesday, May 7, 2013. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public, Republican, put this evening? State your name and address, please.
Erin Quinney, 8 Crescent Street, speaking on behalf of the Southbridge Elementary PTA. In April, on April 26, we had our annual Father Daughter Dance, and we would like to thank The Big Bunny and Village Photos, as well as all the volunteers who came out to make that evening a special event for those girls and their fathers that it was. Special thanks to Sandra Aponte, who coordinated and organized the event, and to Mr. Lab, who donated his time to be the DJ for the evening. And this week, if some of you aren't aware, is Teacher Appreciation Weeks. We want to say thank you to all the teachers in the district for their hard work. Coming up on May 17, sorry, is the Time to Shine, which is this elementary talent show that's being sponsored by the PTA headed by Julie Hurley. That will be May 17 at 7:00 PM at 25 Col Ave. It's $10 for adults and $5 for children, the benefits of which will go to the instrument lending program that will be initiated based upon those funds. And having been to the auditions, I am quite certain it will be a very entertaining evening. Upcoming events for the PTA will be the Dining for Dough at Uno's, and that's May 24th and 25th. So you can get coupons, you hand them in, and then a portion of your bill gets then donated back to the PTA. And that is all that I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak this evening?
Erin Quinney, 8 Crescent Street, speaking on behalf of myself. Chairwoman Woodruff, members of the school committee, and Superintendent Number Co., thank you for this opportunity to address you this evening. As a citizen, taxpayer, and parent of children in the Southbridge School District, I would like to address some concerns that I have regarding accountability. They were brought about by an article in the Telegram and Gazette over the weekend. Within that article, the writer frequently credits "sources" who ask not to be named for information and for confirming other information. It has been stated repeatedly by this body that personnel information is confidential. Based upon that, I think it is a safe assumption that investigations reports into personnel issues are too, indeed, confidential and shared with a finite number of people. It is clear that someone has no respect for confidentiality and either directly or indirectly shared confidential information with the press, and in doing so, in all likelihood, position the Southbridge School District to be sued. Another lawsuit is a financial burden that this district cannot afford. Any future suit and potential settlements will clearly impact the school's budget for years to come. And sadly, this will negatively impact the education of every student in the Southbridge School District. Clearly, whatever sources made the decision to disregard the confidentiality of this personnel matter and make it public did not do so with the best interest of the students in Southbridge in mind. The consequences of their actions will be paid for by our students and the taxpayers of this community for many years to come. The lack of respect for the position they hold, the lack of integrity they demonstrated, as well as the willful disregard for the students and taxpayers in this community is appalling to me. And to go even further and do so under the guise of anonymity is an extraordinary act of cowardice. I believe we, the public, have the right to know who of the finite number of people who had access to this confidential report shared information contained within it. Based upon their behavior in this matter, I do not believe that this person or people possess the conviction of character to take responsibility for their actions on their own. Therefore, it is my sincere hope that this body will do everything in their power to identify the sources and hold them accountable. If they are employed by the district, I believe they should be fired. If they are an elected official, I believe they should be identified publicly so that the voters can hold them accountable and that they also be censured. Every student will pay a price for this individual or individuals' actions, and we, as the taxpayers of Southbridge, will be held responsible for the consequences of their actions. We deserve someone to be held accountable for their own actions, and not holding them accountable would be condoning this egregious behavior. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda, which is calling the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Max?
Domingo?
Excused.
Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mr. Lazo?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Dr. O'Leary?
Present.
Mrs. Principay?
Present.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Present.
Six present, one excused.
Thank you. Next agenda is approval of the minutes of regular school committee, April 23, 2013. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Principay, seconded by Mrs. Donovan. Are there any errors or corrections? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to look at page three, Agenda Item Number 13 under New Business, Paragraph Two, the end of the first sentence. It says, "Seconded by Mrs. McLaughlin relative to the motion." Perhaps it should be seconded, adding an ED to the word "second." In Paragraph Number Three, under that same agenda item, that's something that I had spoke about, the fourth and fifth graders. The name of the show was "A Year with Frog and Toad", not "A Year with Froggy Toad." And then finally, the last thing was on page four, which is Agenda Item Number 14. I believe Mrs. Woodruff was the person who said that the meeting would come back to open session for the purpose of adjournment only. It's the last sentence of that paragraph, and it states Mrs. McLaughlin actually said that the meeting would come back, but that was in fact Mrs. Woodruff.
Yeah, it was Mrs. Woodruff, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor? Minutes pass. Moving on to Chairwoman's announcements. I will have not any, there are no announcements this evening. Next is reports of the Representative Student Advisory Committee. Ms. Faith Mataria.
Hi, Faith.
Hi, hello, everyone. Last Friday was the prom for the high school juniors and seniors, and I have to congratulate Ms. Curry and the junior class for throwing a really amazing prom. It was really fun. There were no really big issues with the students, and I have to say it was really one of the best nights. Last week, Mr. Thomo and Mr. Carrero took freshman students to the State House, and they got to meet the Senator Moore and Representative Durand, who gave them a little history about the chambers of the government, which is really great. The band students attended on May 5 the attendant concert stomp, which was really great for them, and they really had a lot of fun. On May 16, they will have a concert, which will be from grade six through grade 12, so everyone is invited. It'll be $2 at the door for admissions. They will also be participating at the Memorial Day Parade, and the parents will be holding a little banquet for all the senior graduates. Upcoming events also will be this spaghetti dinner from the National Honor Society students from the high school. It'll start at 5:30, and it's all-you-can-eat. Tickets are sold at the door, $5. There's also ruffles. There'll be kid events like face painting, music, and dancing, and so all are invited, and it'll be through 8 o'clock. Next will be May 22. There will be a chorus concert for all the students, and May 24 will be the last day for the senior students. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the school committee reports. Curriculum Subcommittee, Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have a report. However, I would like to announce that I have scheduled another meeting for the Curriculum Subcommittee. It will be held on Monday, May 20 at 7:00 PM in Room M100 of the 25 Col Ave Building. And the agenda item for that evening will be looking at our English Language Learners Program in the Southbridge Public Schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Principay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our last meeting was April 24. Present was myself, school committee member Lauren McLaughlin, Cara Donovan, and Citizen Leanne Pate. The meeting was called Daughter at 9:14 AM. We were working on the community use of school facilities, and we created an informational packet and application for the use of our facilities. The document was forwarded to the superintendent for his input and approval, and he's working on that. And the superintendent will be working on a fee schedule to supplement the packet. We had a few changes. We have a second reading tonight of KF and KFR, Community Use of School Facilities. There were some very minor changes between the first and tonight's second reading, and one was just titling the regulations, saying that's what they are, Community Use of School Facility Regulations. And the other one was a little bit of housekeeping. We put the superintendent before the finance director. We were being consistent throughout. The next meeting that we have is this Friday, May 10 at 9:00 AM, 25 Col Ave, M100 is the room, and we will be discussing code of conduct. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Budget, Facilities, and Transportation. That would be Dr. Domingo's Subcommittee, and she's excused this evening. And Collective Bargaining Subcommittee, Mrs. Principay?
Thank you. We are resuming negotiations with the SEA, May 15, 5 o'clock, 25 Col Ave, Room M100. Thank you.
Thank you. And Communications, Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee, Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing to report. I hope to schedule a meeting and announce that at our next school committee meeting.
Thank you. Moving on, we have a presentation this evening. We have a presentation from the Southbridge Optimists Club. We have Mrs. Gulickson and Mr. Livinggood from the Optimists Club to present scholarship awards this evening.
Good evening. I'm Dave Livinggood, current president of the Southbridge Optimists Club. They're part of the Optimists International. Our whole purpose for being is for the youth of Southbridge. Southbridge and only Southbridge. That's why we're called Southbridge. So we've been doing this kind of stuff since 1985. They used to do an oratorical contest right up here in Town Hall, and I'd like to see that come back possibly next year. Something I'd have to try to bring up with the schools. But we're here tonight for some young ladies who submitted essays and won. We have three people, three winners. And I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Mrs. Gulickson and let her take over.
Thank you. So my name's Maureen Gulickson. I've been chairing the Optimists Club Essay Contest since 2005, and I'm pleased that we had so many applicants this year. We have a theme every year. This year's theme for 2013 was, "How can I help my friends realize their potential?" Mr. Leach was kind enough to help us coordinate the contest, and we had 16 entries from the seniors that are graduating at Southbridge Middle High School. Before I call forward the winners, I just want to thank Mr. Leach for his help with the coordination, and I'd also like to thank the judges that we had this year. Mike Vesha, fifth-grade teacher from the West Street School, has been a judge for many, many years. We appreciate his participation because he judges them in one night, so I don't have to chase him down. The second judge is Max Gulickson. Did I get your name right? Okay, great. So he's also been a judge for many years, and sometimes I do have to chase him down. So I'm going to start with our first-place finisher tonight, and I'd like to call forward Tanisha Espino. Here you go. So Tanisha is graduating from Southbridge High School in a few weeks. She attended the prom last week. She's going to Assumption next year, where she will be a pre-med student. So great things coming out of Southbridge High.
Excuse me. Tanisha, would you like to come and shake our hands? I just want to, as a chair, I'd like to congratulate you on good job on your essay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. It's nice to see four outstanding graduates in one room tonight. Our second-place finisher is Emma Hammond. And Emma is also graduating, also attended the prom this past Friday night. She is going to QuinnSig next year, where she'll be in early education, in the early education program, and then her hope is to transfer to Framingham State to be a teacher. And our third-place finisher, whose name will sound a little familiar to you, is Tanisha Espino, whose twin sister won first place. Tanisha told me she skipped the prom. However, she is going to Assumption with her sister next year. She hopes to take, she's going to major in Biology, and she hopes to take some veterinary classes over at Becker through the Worcester Consortium. So on behalf of David Livinggood and the Southbridge Optimists Club, I want to thank all of the participants. I want to congratulate the winners. I wish them well in their future. And thank you to Mrs. Woodruff and the school committee for giving us time on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, girls.
One final thing. The Optimists has always had a good working relationship with the Southbridge School Department, and hopefully that'll continue. And if the PTA wants to contact somebody and they need some help with anything, just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Livinggood. David Livinggood.
Mr. Livinggood, I was asked to speak at the Rotary. I was wondering if you want me to come and say a few words at one of your Optimists Club meetings. I'd be happy to do that, because I really think it's important that we recognize organizations such as yours, and that can be a model for our young people, because organizations such as yours, the Rotary, the Vines, and so on, their membership is starting to get a little old. And what we need to do is get young people involved, so they understand the value of volunteering, and not only the good it does for the community, but also the benefit to themselves from doing that. So I'm always very pleased to work with all of these various organizations that give selflessly to the community their time, effort, and money. So thank you very much for doing this.
Contact me or any other Optimists in town, and I'd be happy to. And the Optimists is going through the same problems, where since '85, a lot of the people who had started it are starting to get to that age, where it's just more than they can handle now.
Yeah, I think I-
And it's hard getting younger people involved.
So I'll talk to Mr. Gulickson. I think he might have contacts, correct?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on this evening, we have a report of the superintendent.
Yes, I have a few items this evening. Number one, I want to congratulate all the students and the faculty members and staff members who attended the prom and made it such a success. Prior to that, they are unaware of the fact we spent a lot of time reviewing procedures for appropriate behavior, appropriate dress, and we spent a lot of time talking about the kinds of dances young people do today. We're very concerned about that, so it was an interesting conversation we had with that. And Mr. Leach emailed me afterwards, and everything went fine, and we were concerned about all of that. So just again, another example of good behavior that often goes unnoticed throughout the community. Last week, I also had the pleasure of hosting the Deputy Commissioner of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Alan Ingram, and the Associate Commissioner, Linda Foizie. I had, Alan Ingram was the former superintendent of Springfield. He's number two in the organization. I've known him for a long time. And I really was concerned about appointing the school committee, Lazo made, about exit procedures, and the state has developed some exit procedures. And I wanted to make sure that the state understood the unique circumstances of the Southbridge Public Schools, and then how the Southbridge Public Schools, in partnership with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, can work toward exiting as soon as possible. And one of the interesting conversations we had was, before I asked them for more money, was the fact that being a relatively small district, four schools with about 2,200 students would be a perfect laboratory for them to see what works and what doesn't work. They've spent hundreds of millions of dollars throughout the states, throughout this state, with Holyoke, Lawrence, and all those districts that are underperforming, and they've been at it for 15 years, and they don't have a great deal to show for it. So I thought that by working with them in partnership, that if they work with us and train people and help us recruit people and so on, that we would be able to have best practices, assess those best practices, develop accountability system with their support, and then show the state how you can improve performance, and how by working collaboratively and collectively with the larger agency that has more resources, we would be able to exit sooner. Because I said, if you just keep on doing the same thing, where will we be in five years? So that was the issue that I presented to them. So if the state is serious about providing the technical assistance rather than just the monitoring that we're getting now, so I presented the challenge to them. Dr. Ingram was very supportive of that, because he knows what it's like to try to turn around Springfield. He was superintendent there for four years, and he realizes that scale is very important. We have a size that can make a, be a model for if something doesn't work, we can turn, we can turn on a dime, literally here, whereas a big district, you have to go through numerous layers of organization and so on. So I will keep the school committee informed. It was an idea I presented to them. They said they would go back and think about it. They thought it was a great idea. We'll see where it goes from them. But I wanted to take the opportunity to press the state, because we are a Level Four district that's been grandfathered. And grandfather means old, and I don't want many of the young kids growing old in a Level Four district. So that was that. The other area that we're working on very aggressively is, we've been meeting with all of our principals, all of our schools, and the various cost centers to look at our budget. As you know, last week, we met with the town council, and they were very supportive, excellent audience we presented that, but the final vote came to a 4.2% increase rather than the 5.9% that the school committee had approved. And so what that means is that we have to reduce our budget by more than $400-plus thousand to get to the 4.2. And with that caveat, the 4.2, that 4.2 budget was predicated upon the governor's recommendation, and the House has already rejected that proposal and has lowered that some more, and the Senate is now working on it. And before it goes to the conference committee, who knows what's going to happen. So I've asked the various administrators and so on to be looking at that 4.2, plus in the back of their, I was going to say backpocket, but that's not a good place to talk about money. In the back of their minds, be prepared, it will also be developing a contingency plan to be looking at maybe possibly another $200,000 reduction if the House budget holds true. So that's something we're working on. We've been looking at all of that. We're looking at the reorganization, its effects on the budget and so on. So this is going to, I'll be meeting for the next two weeks with the various parties going through all elements of it. I've asked each cost center to develop their priorities, and once we establish and accept their priorities, then we'll look at how we can make sure that those priorities get bid, and other things that are not as important can be addressed. And when I say not as important, you know, when I initially did this a couple of months ago, in the stage of phase one of the budget, many of them came up with 15, 20 priorities. You can't have 15 or 20 priorities. If you have that many priorities, you don't have any priorities. So I've asked them to go back through those in light of the situation that we're in now and review that, and then whittle that down, and then we can start looking at how we can accomplish that. So that's, in a nutshell, the multiple avenues we've been going at the same time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to school committee actions this evening. Under, actually, there's no school committee actions this evening, no votes to take place. So we'll move on to unfinished business. And under unfinished business, yes, Mrs. Principay?
Yes, Madam Chair. Under unfinished business, we have school readings, second readings, rather, of school committee policy. And A and B are exhibits, and we do not vote the exhibits. Our last meeting, we removed them, and I should have told the administrative assistant not to put them in this week, but I forgot. So we don't need to vote A and B. Have a second reading on A and B.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Principay. So under unfinished business, then, we have the second reading of the Community Use of School Facilities File KF, and the second reading of the Community Use of School Facilities Regulations File KFR. Do I have a motion to waive those readings this evening?
Some move.
Do I have a motion to waive them by Mrs. Principay? Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a second by Mrs. McLaughlin. Is there any discussion on these two policies before we waive the reading, or are we all set, Mrs. Principay, on those?
I think we're all set. I spoke just briefly during the minutes, the very minor changes, more housekeeping.
Okay. Does anyone else have any discussion on that? Seeing none, can we have a roll call on that, Max, please?
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. Is there any other unfinished business this evening? Mr. Lazo?
Just a quick note. We had a meeting on-site for the use of the fields. The fields have not formally been turned over to the district. We ran into a little problem with the football field up at the new high school. It wasn't supposed to be used during the seeding in the fall season, and they used the field, so they trampled the seed. So the Cisigli group sat down, and they're going to probably, in the fall, use the fields. In the fall, they're going to shut the field down for about three to four weeks and do a reseed. The two soccer fields are absolutely golf course quality, and they want the football field to be the same way. As far as the softball field and the baseball field, they are opening them up today. It's their first day practicing on the new facilities. John La Perle, head of Cisigli, stated that, "Let's set it where we use these fields for the second half of the season, and then after, in the fall, Mountain View will come back." They're working hand-in-hand with Mike Como as far as to touch up the stone dust and the various things that they have to do to the turf. It was very important for the building committee to let the seniors get a little taste of the new facility and fields. I think Cisigli and Mountain View were fantastic to say, "Look, use the fields. Let us come back in the fall, and they will sign the fields over to the school system. In the meantime, you can use them for practice and recreation." So that was good news for the seniors. They get to, you know, play on those fields. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lazo. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. The next regular school committee meeting will be held on May 21, 2013, in the council chambers. Is there any other new business? Mr. Lazo?
Just one quick announcement, Madam Chairman. I would just like to say that I will not be seeking another term on the Southbridge School Committee. I would like to congratulate, it'll be Ms. Quinney and Ms. Condon, to serve on the school committee, from what I understand. I was very sad, and when Rose Lamro dropped out, I thought she was a very strong personality and was a very capable person to be on the school committee. I pulled papers for two offices, and the reason why was I was having a tug of war. The reason why I ran for school committee-
committee was because of the new school building. We had a $3.6 million deficit at that time, and I thought that running for the school committee and turning the finances around would make the public believe that this new middle high school was right, and that we do know what we're doing inside our buildings. The turnaround financially happened. We still have work to do, and I commend all the new school committee members as far as the work ahead. The only thing that I can say is I am, I do have council papers pulled that will be running. I'll talk about that another time. To the school committee members, the only bit of advice I'd like to give you is make sure you know the history before you make decisions, and it's always been good to us, and I think it'll be good to you. I wish you the best of luck in the upcoming years. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lazo, and good luck to you also when you're running. Is there any other new business this evening, Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two quick things. When I went to see A Year with Frog and Toad this weekend, a parent came up to me, was very upset, that another parent was actually smoking, first in the school, and then in the corridor, in the entryway, and then immediately outside. When this parent was confronted, the parent's response was, "There are no posted signs." The other parent said, "Well, it's against state law," and the parent that was smoking said, "Not if there are no posted signs." I know that's not true. I know smoking is prohibited on state property, which means this person should have been smoking on Tory Road, but if we could get a sign posted, at least even at the entry to the school, you know, wherever, the entryway, the driveway, whatever, to just remind people that smoking is not permitted on school property, that would be helpful. And the other thing that I noticed the other day that concerned me was as I was driving into the school to drop my daughter off, the sun was very bright, and it was beating down on the whole Wall of Fame. And I know we probably have low-y glass in there or something like that, but I'm still very concerned about all that memorabilia in there, that it's going to fade over time, as it would anyway, and I was wondering if there's any way to get some sort of shading up, or some sort of sunblock, or I don't know what, if they can do an additional treatment to those windows, because the sun was very strong, and I just would hate to see any of that stuff wrecked. So, if anybody has an idea.
I think we'll ask that question of Cazigley. The glass that is on the exterior is a special tinted glass. The glass on the actual cabinets are not. That's just straight glass. It's a good, it's a good point. I'll ask Johnny La Plou at the next meeting that we have, you know.
I just watch out for it, just because-
There's a lot of old artifacts in there.
Thank you. Anything else, Mrs. McLaughlin?
Oh, no. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dr. O'Leary?
Thank you. Just a minute in response to Mr. Lazo's comment. I just want to extend my own thanks. Scott, you've been a beacon of guidance and wisdom for my time here, anyway. So, really endless thanks, Scott. You're going to be missed. Good luck in your future endeavors. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment on some events that I had attended in the school district and in the community since our last meeting, and they were all such wonderful, positive experiences that I just had to give a shout out. The first place that I had attended was the science fair at the middle high school. I brought my first grader and my fifth grader to the science fair that they had, and the students that were there were most gracious, but the inventions that they had come up with and the experiments that they had done were phenomenal, and we just, we just don't hear enough about the great things that our students are doing, and I was just so deeply impressed by everything, and I just wanted to congratulate all of our kids that participated in that science fair. It was very, very, very well done. Another congratulations to all the fourth and fifth graders who starred last week in A Year with Frog and Toad. Again, phenomenal show, phenomenal kids doing phenomenal things. I know Mrs. McLaughlin was there, and I saw building principals there. I saw teachers there. I saw paraprofessionals there, Title I reading teachers there, parents there, neighbors there. It was just a very, it was just a great community event. The kids did a great job. So, again, congratulations to all that were involved in that. The other event that I attended was the additions to the Time to Shine, and as Mrs. Quinney had mentioned, the Time to Shine show is working towards our musical lending of instrument program, and I sat through those auditions, and again, the children that auditioned for that show are in kindergarten through grade five, and some of them bring you to tears because they are so genuinely talented and so into what they are doing. And again, you just don't hear enough about these wonderful things that our little kids are doing, and I just have to say that if you have the time, please support our kids. Please support these hard-working people in our community, these moms who are really trying to make a difference in our schools and attend that talent show. It's for a wonderful cause, and support these first graders, second grade, third graders, fourth graders, fifth grades. Show them that you care and that you're here for them, because they're all working very, very hard. And then, last but not least, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, again, as Mrs. Quinney had mentioned, and I know that our elementary PTA is, always does a phenomenal job of recognizing our teachers, however, only at the elementary school level, and we know that we have teachers up at the middle high school as well and support staff, and I would just like to, you know, give a warm thank you to all of them, that you truly are appreciated by all of us in the school district, and thank you for all that you do each and every day. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Mr. Lazo?
I had something marked down, and Committee Member Donovan, through what she was saying, jogged my memory, my mind here. I'd just like to, some feedback that we got on the prom was outstanding. The management of the facility came forward and said that the Southbridge High School kids' behavior was the best they've seen at their facility, and I know that there are a lot of schools have proms, and they have issues and stuff. I was so proud to hear that feedback, and I know that Mr. Leach and a lot of the teachers were actually contacted at the prom on the behavior of the Southbridge High students, and it was absolutely fabulous. So, kudos to the kids and the administration, administrators and teachers that were there.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business, I mean, new business, sorry, before we move on? Next agenda is executive session. Vote to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union, non-union, personnel, or litigation to the extent that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body pursuant to Chapter 38, Section 21A, Part 3. Do I have a motion?
Some more.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Principay, seconded by Mr. Lazo. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. We'll open, we'll come back to open session for adjournment only. Thank you.